The 9th of December, open for business. We have on the agenda, one item, the public hearing or the shower super eight request.
Roll call.
I'm sorry?
Roll call.
Roll call, thank you.
Nobody's here.
Ed Burke?
Here.
Bob Hughes?
Here.
Gail Christman, present. Pat Forge, here. Linda Donovan and Joe Mollyello, our lawyer.
Yep.
Here. Yeah. And for those of you who are not aware, though I think we all are, this is going to be Gail's last meeting after many years of very beautiful and very effective public service. Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Which we will say is a form of thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Really? Good bunch of people. I recommend it.
The public hearing. Before, well, I guess we can open it. Entertained a motion that we open up the public hearing for the shower sign request.
Second?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is open. And perhaps, one of you or both of you will summarize what it is you're asking for and why. You can come up here, speak, we have people in the audience, a member of the government class who was here as part of his work with that class. Want to make sure that he understands all of this.
We are here for you guys to basically get a height variance and an area variance for our current pole sign that we have next to the building. We changed plans and therefore, it is knee long to basically get a new permission to have the sign installed. We currently have some hardships that we need to overcome, such as some treaties, a concrete wall, fence over and over paths, and especially the depth of our property as to where it sits compared to where the roadway is.
And how much of a variance are you asking for?
For the height of the sign, we are looking for, I believe it would be a six, well, a six foot variance from what the current law states, which is 12 feet from the roadway. We would be looking for 16 feet approximately, give or take a couple inches, I don't know how it is that you guys go about doing that, or round it to whatever it is. And as well as the area variance, we are looking for a sign that is the size of a five by eight sign, two sided or two faced, however you like to refer to as. The current sign law states that it needs to be a total number of 12 square feet in area size.
So that variance is how much?
It's over here. I just want to make sure my measurements are correct.
Yes, yeah. You said a two by eight.
A total of 66 square feet larger than what the current.
66 square feet?
Yes, larger, but that's factored in both sides. I imagine that that is what we did do since maybe a total square.
Well, how can that, your sign now is, is about the same size as the new one?
108 square feet.
Your sign now is 108, okay.
So your 108, you're asking for how much?
Uh, 82, is it? Yes, I believe it's 82.
The application says 80, but.
80.
But the application goes back to it.
Well, even so, we're talking about, what, 26 square feet, basically?
If the. Feet when you put some inches. I thought the sign needs background photos.
That's permitted, I believe, is 12 square foot each side.
12 square feet, I'm sorry?
No, 12 feet higher than the measured from the other road.
On top of the area.
Okay.
Area is. 14 square feet, seven square feet for each side, I think is what's.
That's all?
That's what I've got on.
That's a 100 square feet, so I don't know. It's the maximum signage for our commercial.
Why don't we bring them up?
He said 12.
To the table.
The application says, the statute says 14.
Said 14, yeah.
It should be, it should be five by eight, which is 40 square feet. They have on the pole or on the sign pictures here, eight feet and then there's a nine and three sixteenths of an inch, that nine and three sixteenths of an inch is the thickness of the actual sign. And so I apologize, that's what's.
The existing sign was about 102 square feet?
108.
108.
Yeah.
And the proposed sign of is going to be?
40 square feet?
82.
80?
Yeah, 82.
Yeah, 80.
80.
80 square feet.
80, oh 80, 40 per side.
40 per side.
Okay.
And a moment ago, you said the, the allowed signage was 12 square feet, but the application says 14. Do you know?
I'm thinking it's 14.
The law was printed out, actually.
The 12 is the height above the roadway?
Yep, 14 square feet.
14 square.
Maximum height of 12 feet from the road. Oh no. Pole sign's 14 square feet in sign area, that's what you're asking me, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So 14 times two, two sides is 28. So from a 28 foot allowance, you're asking for 66 square feet? No, 80. Oh, 80.
80. From a 28, 80.
So that's 52 square feet variance.
That 14 is for two sides or for one side?
One side.
Yeah, right. Nobody else's is 14s.
And the actual dimensions of the requested sign are, what are the dimensions played with?
That is the five by eight, I believe.
Five, five high, right by the Y?
Yes.
Five high by eight wide.
And that wouldn't matter whether it was on the pole or on the ladder? You have two, you have a couple options here.
That's, that is to the plate on the pole.
That's to the plate on the pole?
Yeah, the actual sign exposure.
Yeah, what about this?
Bob, where are you?
This is a two by 10.
This is a two by 10?
Yeah, and.
So that would be less of a variance?
Uh, yes, that would be 20 square feet for that, yes. Well, it depends on, I gotta look at the law for, would that be considered a ladder sign since it has two poles, or would it be considered a pole sign?
Joe?
Looks like a monument.
The ladder, is it?
That's considered a monument.
Kelly probably would know better.
What's that?
On the sign with the, with two poles and the sign spanning the two poles.
That's a ladder.
It's a ladder, right?
Oh.
If it's fully filled in, that's fine.
It's still a ladder sign.
Yeah, if it's just the poles, otherwise the, the total black, one that I submitted the photo of, I think would be considered a monument.
Yeah, this one.
Now, if, if you went with the ladder, that's an 18 square foot sign area that's permitted, so it would be two square feet. And then, if it's the monument, we're permitted up to 30 square feet of sign area, but then you're still dealing with the height. Because the height, you're only allowed up to five feet tall.
Okay.
For a monument.
Could we discuss the ladder sign?
Absolutely.
Okay. And looking at the ladder sign.
What ladder are you talking about, this one?
This one here, yeah. I don't, no, not that one, the one before, that's the monument.
Okay.
I like the one where you can see through to the trees.
I agree.
It's a true ladder sign.
I have the two.
And you have a planter down here, and you also have a light that was shining right on it.
Yep, I don't know how the, the light stipulations would work because the light is not located on our property.
And the property is?
I believe that it's out of the town, or the highway departments, whoever it is. If you look at that survey drawn that I had, it'll show you the approximate distance from our property line for it, but I don't know if.
Correct.
Who permitted that before?
Dotting line, is that the property line?
Yeah, and then the ground light is out here.
Yeah.
Is that part of the property you were talking about, that's your mom and dad's, and it would be temporary, perhaps?
Yes, the dotted line on the survey is the second parcel there, yeah, that's correct.
But it would be in that second parcel?
Yes, it would be on the second parcel.
Either the monument or the ladder sign would be on that triangle, which is legally a different parcel.
It is, yes.
Right.
Yeah. We would need a, I believe it's like a side yard setback variance, because you're supposed to be 10 feet from the property line, that's nowhere as close, that's probably less than a foot from the property.
It's right on, it looks like, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on that last parking space.
Yeah.
Right, just one here.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is not your property?
This.
This is your father's?
Yes.
And this is yours?
Correct, that's my, that's my mother and father's as a second parcel compared to this, it's own, it's got a separate deed and stuff, so they really.
Oh, I see, now I see, thanks. So your property ends with the dark line?
Yeah, which is right next to that pump station.
The slide along that, sorry.
Yeah.
And do you have objections, Bob, should summarize them, to using, putting the sign on that, what I think of as the triangular piece as separate property?
The, just on the second piece?
Yeah.
I don't have objections to it, we would just go and consider it, it's really just that they consider to go and do an alternative business there. A couple of years ago, it's gotta be like 2007 now, prior to the Hampton applying for the town board or planning board or whatnot, the town board had changed and altered the laws for hotel parking spaces. They made it to be much less needed. If that's the case, we could probably eliminate half of that parking area all the way from the corner to just a couple of spaces near the door, because we have almost 90 parking spaces and we only have 69 rooms. I believe that it's, I didn't calculate the total, but it's, it's a pretty significant amount. So they wanted to consider that if there's another hotel being built, and then they have a hotel, maybe there's another business type that would be accommodating to out-of-town guests to be right there on that corner.
Right.
Starbucks pasture.
Ski rental.
And it could, yeah, I mean, it could be anything from a, at one time, we were approached by a rental car company that wanted to have a satellite service in the hotel establishment at the time they could. We also have had discussions with deli owners, where if you had some type of a deli for early breakfast, that's hot and everything, so as an alternative to what a hotel can go and serve and provide, so.
Let's get back to signage.
Yeah, so I think that's a consideration though, but I think that with what you're saying, it's only something that isn't really on the books yet.
Yeah.
And if it did come on the books, you could get a right of way.
Yeah.
To keep the sign.
Yeah, we might be able to keep the sign, it really depends on location and everything, it's, it's just hearsay, it's just something that they wanted to have the option to have, that's all.
Can you, can you get the, the attention from this sign, from this ladder sign that we're talking about here? Can you get the attention from that sign as opposed to your pole sign?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. I think that's what our decision kind of has to be.
This is the one side to side?
Yes.
Correct. If I remember correctly, your, one of your concerns was people coming, heading west?
Yes, from the near street.
From the thruway.
Yeah. It's really not completing what we're looking for, it's facing the opposite direction, we're just simply trying to factor it in to appease the board because it's something that might aesthetically look better to what you suggested.
And coming, heading east, these poles are gonna be right in the line of sight, I mean, I know where this angle is from, but it's not gonna do anybody any good.
They'll, they'll definitely be in the way, for sure.
For sure.
And it has a light that shines on, also in the dark. Has a light already fixed.
Bob, I couldn't see it.
I'm sure you're allowed to have a light.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, what did you say?
That there is a light there, there is electric there to hook up to, to illuminate that, and I just looked at it from a couple angles, it looked fairly visible to me if the board doesn't want to pursue the ladder. I mean, the pole sign.
Were you standing still, or were you driving?
Both, I got out and went down, walked down.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming out and taking a look at the project, it's important to go and do. You really can't get the depth.
Yeah.
To me, I mean, I try to do pictures, but they don't exactly do justice, it's just.
I didn't know the depth, actually, but without looking at it, I thought it was on equal footing with the other signs, but it's a quick drop off.
Yeah.
Is there any, have we talked about lowering your pole sign so it doesn't quite look like a pole sign? I'm speaking particularly about the super eight sign over on Nine W, next to Ortega's.
Yeah.
It is quite a bit lower than yours, and it doesn't quite look like a pole sign.
No.
But we're dealing with that, that thruway thing that's going on here. So if we lowered, if you lowered it however many feet, so it didn't quite look like a pole sign, but rather look like a sign? Is that possible?
Well, we previously discussed off of a recommendation of Linda Donovan, she had mentioned to try to shrink it down so that way you didn't have much. I spoke with the gentleman from Persona, the sign company that I'm working with, he can drop it down.
That's Gregory Cornell?
Yes, yeah.
Did you make this work?
No, I did not, okay.
And he had stated that it would impair the strength of the structure after a foot and a half, if we could get it down to the actual plate that's on the sign, so that would be taking a foot and a half off. But to go any lower than that, it would require us to basically replace the pole, and this is what I was speaking about, for the plate. The other problem is that if I go lower, much, much lower than that plate, Mr. Burke had stated, hey, if you go too low, are you gonna be able to see the sign? Basically, he'd, last meeting, he had asked if I could go and get height dimensions to the roof and how much of a difference it would be. I did not get height variations to the roof. By doing the same thing, walking on the sidewalk and driving, the plate is actually located right at the top of the tree. If I were to go any lower, we would have needed to cut the trees down much lower than what they currently are.
Look, you did cut the trees.
Yes, they have, they have been, they have been trimmed down, yes. But it does go right to the plate. I don't have a greatest picture to go and show that, but we're fine with going a foot and a half down to the plate.
Why is it possible with the sign?
To try to reduce the height a little. Something else that might be able to happen is that our actual pole, the base of the pole is much wider than the top.
Yep.
So they might be able to extend what's there to be wider, so that way it looks more like a, a thicker structure than just that skinny pole.
No, 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 why couldn't the sign, why couldn't the sign start, your sign now start here instead of way up here? At the wider part. Right at the roof, right at the roof level, why couldn't that sign, your sign be here? There in not looking like a pole sign?
To be honest, I can't answer the question just because I'm not the sign company. They, they just told me that it would impair the strength of the pole if they were to cut. I mean, if there's some other type of plate there, I don't know, I don't know how that's built.
Looks like the extension starts about there. And that would certainly reduce, reduce that pole sign by a lot and still be very visible from the thruway, from the road, from every place else.
I certainly, I certainly don't object to it, I mean, I'm truthfully just trying to get a sign.
We want to help you do that.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Again, I just don't know, I'm just going off of what he informed me of. He might be able to go and solder something on there, I don't know.
Do you guys have this picture?
Yes.
Yeah, look at that, right there.
Okay, well, this picture. If you brought the top of this sign in line, and I think kind of what the rest of the board may be asking, how do you get the sign the same height of the roof and the line? But that, then it doesn't look so much like this pole sign hanging in the air.
Right. I'm sorry, Ed, I was distracted, would you say that again, please?
I think what we're asking is can we get the sign in line with the roof line, top of the sign in line with the top of the roof?
Yes.
I mean, is that accurate, so it doesn't look so much like this thing hanging out in the sky?
Somewhere, somewhere in here.
So when we're sitting here looking at this, and you're looking at the view heading west, if this sign was behind the spence, you'd still be able to see it?
Sure.
So what I was asking, do you know what the paint is to the top of the roof?
I do not, I do know that the wall sign is approximately 30 feet in height.
Right, but that's probably lower.
That's your wall sign, isn't it?
Well, the wall sign is right here.
Right, but the ground is lower here than it's here, right, if I remember correctly. I thought when you walked, there was a slight elevation up as you went to that sign.
And to go to the thruway edge of the hotel.
Well, I mean, if, I believe that the pole sign as a super eight sign sits 40 feet, okay, if that sits 40 feet and this were 30 feet.
Your total, all right, so then the sign, the existing sign's gonna wind up being five feet shorter, if everything was the same.
Yeah, a little bit more than that, yeah, I think it's like five and a half or something like that.
All right.
But yeah.
So you, I think what, if I'm doing my math right, you'd have to cut this pole four and a half feet to have it in line with the roof line.
Yeah, okay. Somewhere in there, for sure. I mean, if this is 30, and even if you add another three feet on there or something like that, it's 33, 35.
Actually, there's 30 plus the pitch.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's 30 to the top of the sign?
I, yes, I believe so.
Now, if that's another two feet, if you could cut that pole, probably three feet shorter and put your sign on, then you'd be in line with the roof line.
Okay.
According to Gregory Cornell, you know, in this email, that I have a copy of it, but not everyone has a copy of it, it's out of touch, I don't know. He says the existing super eight pole, pole banquet sign, is 21 feet 6 inches from the road depth of Main Street to the top of the sign. The sign is 109 inches tall and is being replaced by a sign that is 60 and 3/8 inches tall, so it's certainly in this way, it's more like this. So the new sign is four feet 5/8 inches shorter than the existing sign. There's also an 18 inch stub hole protruding from the bottom of the existing sign that will be removed as part of the sign reimage. The stub is 18 inches tall, if we add the 18 inch stub hole and the difference in height of the existing and new signs, we get a new overall height that is five feet 6 and 5/8 inches lower than the existing sign and pole structure. Can we get it down even lower?
I have no idea, unless we replace the pole. For going off the way he stated, that's all.
Right.
But how much lower are you, do you want to go from there?
Well, I, you know, I like the idea of it not being any higher than the top of the roof line of the super eight, uh, the, America's Best Value Inn.
Sorry, I see things still.
It'll take a while.
Practice, practice.
It'll take a while for us to get there, right. So if, if the top of that sign was the top of your roof line.
Okay.
I don't know how many feet this, this might be, but probably.
The new sign is gonna be more like that.
Well, we don't want it like that, we want it.
Yeah, I know, but.
Still down, yes.
It's not gonna have quite as much height as that one does.
So we need to figure out how many, how many feet that might be, and whether or not that pole, the existing pole could accommodate it, and I can't imagine it wouldn't.
Did you say the plate is here?
No, the plate sits a little bit higher. It's letting me show you, if you don't mind me using it. It looks like it would be right around there, whether.
Bob?
18 or so.
Oh, that's right, okay, okay. So it has to sit on top of that?
The super eight though, the America's Best Value.
You know, this is, this is serious stuff, it's for you as well, but it really is very important, especially for me, I know I will tell you right up front, the sign is much too high, it has always been very offensive to me, and anything that I approve has to really come down. Why are you so reluctant to replace the pole?
The expenses.
How much?
I have no idea, but I know that it's extremely costly. From speaking with the gentleman from Persona, he had asked and questioned the pole just because of the flaking paint, he wanted to know if it was worth the strength. So he had a gentleman from the sign company come out and test the pole to make sure that it would be strong enough to hold the sign. That came back fine, but in the midst of that, I had asked him, and he's just like, you don't want to replace the pole if you don't have to because of the cost. The sign itself was very expensive. And that's only really my concern, is that if we're talking a foot and a half or two feet, it's like to go and spend the money on a pole, I mean, the pole is stainless steel itself, and people scrap metal all the time, to give an example, and they make 100, 200, 300 bucks a pop when they go to scrap metal. That pole is extremely heavy in shape. If you can cut it, that'd be great, it's just a matter of if he can actually cut it, going off of what he had told me, he had said that it would impair the strength. I don't mind if it's a little bit shorter, I, we can certainly deal with that, it's just a matter of if, if he can or not. If he wants to replace the pole over a foot and a half, that's just gonna be disappointing to me, just because, you know what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
Yeah, it's just.
We're talking, we're talking about a 30-year amortization now, you know? It's, it's been here now for 30 years, we're talking about the next 30 years of being in this location.
Yeah.
So, you know, you amortize it often, it's not such a big expense. I mean, it is, of course, off the top.
It could be, I mean.
You amortize.
We are just a 69 unit hotel, and we're not over 100 units and stuff.
Yeah. Have you gotten a second opinion from a second sign person?
Just, I worked with Timely Signs out of Kingston, and they, they felt as though that the pole would be the best for us as far as traffic wise goes and stuff. They didn't have any suggestions anywhere else on property, it was, but they didn't mention anything in regards to height or anything like that.
But in terms of, in terms of taking this pole down even to.
The first stop.
To, to, to where it starts the telescope, that's.
I did not at the time, just, it was, it's been there.
The structural integrity question of it.
Yeah, I mean, when I, when I signed on with the, with Persona, they had the best rates for the actual sign.
Sure.
So that's who I've been speaking with ever since, I mean, as far as timely, because we tried to employ local business more so than out-of-town business, they're like, hey, we can go and install the sign, but it's gonna cost you another $1,800 from America's Best Value Inn, because they want to make sure that it meets their specs, and it creates a bunch of nonsense, and that's the only reason why I'm even using Persona.
I want to clarify something with the board right now. Are we in agreement that this pole sign would be the better location and the better option than the ladder sign or the monument sign on a separate piece of property?
Yes.
I think.
I'm sorry?
I absolutely do.
You feel that the pole, Bob?
Yeah, I do.
Gail?
Yes.
And I do as well, so, okay, so we will get, you know, that separate piece of property, we're just focusing now, the best way to work this out.
I just have a question, because I just heard something new. Are you dealing with specs also from America's Best Value Inn that you're restricted to?
Uh, for colors and the shape of the signage and stuff, they have their own standards?
Not for height or anything?
No.
How about the size?
I'm sorry?
The size of the sign?
It's the proportions for the graphical image.
Right.
It becomes distorted if you put it in certain things, so they even require, like, So they even require, like, Persona to take a digital photo once it's installed before they'll even get paid, and, like, it's just, it turns into a thing without... But even the blue color is a trademark color. So there's only six sign companies out there that you can get the color from. So even if you have your own personal installers, you have to buy it from this other sign company first, and so...
But it's not an issue with them. If structurally sound, it's not an issue with them if you took off the top telescope?
No, not with America's Best Value Inn.
Because if you took that off, it looks like you'd be right in the, in the, uh, area of view that is being discussed. So that, if you could find that out, that would be very helpful to you, would it?
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem going in and seeing what they can come up with. Again, if he just requests that he wants a new pole, and, I mean, I know it's all hearsay, it's just... To me, it's a couple of feet, whether it be a foot and a half or three. To go financially, I...
The telescoping piece has gotta be an add-on.
I hope that it is.
It's gotta be some type of an add, a drop-in that's...
Yeah.
But how much, how many feet do you think this is?
Attached to the original application, there's a pic, there's a photo.
Yeah, that's where they put the original.
There's a top plate on top of the square pole, and then there's a round...
I think that's about four.
Pole on top of the plate.
So you do it as it's a roof.
Are they talking about being able to remove that round pole and leave the square pole?
Yes, but below that, that photo that you have right there, there's another extension that they're talking about. But I think it's an extension. I, it looks like one.
Joe, you got the sign? Then eighteen inches below that is the extension that they're talking about taking off. And then between that extension and the base, that, that's what we're talking about.
Oh, there are two pieces?
I, I believe there are. I could be wrong.
Well, there's the base, but they're, they're willing to take off.
Well, you got, you got the main part of the body right here.
Yeah.
I'm talking this piece right here.
Right.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, show me again, because I was not looking.
Here's the main body of the sign. I believe this sticking out is an insert or an extension that may be able to be adjusted.
This second.
Well, that's where you're gonna have to talk to your sign.
If the sign is gonna be both sides anyway, right? Not be great graphic artist.
Whoa.
Is there a way to take the square pole and hang a sign on each side of it?
I think it, I think it would only affect the internally lit aspect to it if... I mean, as long as they could do the lighting on each side of the pole, I'd, I'd imagine it's going to leave a dark spot in the middle. But I don't, I don't know for sure.
But is, but is Mr. Perk said if enough of that pole could come down almost to the top of the square pole might give a fair amount of relief here for this?
Yeah.
That's an answer that you're looking to get, right?
I just, you know, unscientifically sketched, and I'm, I'm looking at the existing sign, Rob. So this section from the existing sign to that first plate is about eighteen inches. I think it's about four of those sections worth, till you get down to the square pole.
Okay, so it's about six feet?
Okay. So if you were to mount a sign on to that, you would need no height variance. In fact, to get to your twelve feet, you'd probably have a foot or so that you could play with. Eh, maybe? You know, for, for the appropriate mounting brackets and that sort of thing, and still be within that twelve feet. I think that from looking at your photos from the road, like, your, your westbound photo, I think you've, and I can see in this westbound photo actually where that square pole starts. If your sign was there, you're still visibly above the railing on the overpass.
Yeah.
In the westbound. I mean, I think it's important that you get visibility from both westbound and eastbound. You want people coming out of Mohawk who are not gonna go home.
I'm glad, because we do too.
You know, and, and you want people who are coming into New Halls off the throughway. I, you know, I totally, I totally get that. Um, and also from this westbound car mirror shot, which is really a good one. It looks, if you were to go down to that square pole level, it looks like you'd really be pretty much in alignment with the roof of your building. And I know, 'cause I go that way all the time, the roof of your building is all I can ever see. You know, but I do see the roof perfectly well from either of those westbound lanes.
If I had to guess, it'd probably match the, the wall sign. Just, if it's six feet going off like what you drew there, and then the sign is five feet, I mean, you're looking at basically ten feet, and then when you look to the other sketch for twenty-one or whatever, you take ten feet off of it, it's, it's thirty feet, and that's what the wall sign is, so...
Yeah, maybe.
I know, I close it and all.
We're using a different, we're using different math, but, you know? I'm, I'm looking at it, you know, really just at the visual impact of it.
I understand.
You know, and, and working with the equipment that you have, you know, the, the material that you have, and trying to economize on that.
I appreciate it.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, it is a big deal.
Yeah, and it's a big deal for us, too. I, I mean, we're certainly powerful to try to do with wire something, so...
Rob, when, when was this building built?
Eighty-four. We just hit our thirty-year anniversary September.
I just think, I mean, as an aide to Rob, would building plans still be in the department to get, that would give him some idea of the top of the roof? How high it is? I mean, it's worth looking at. I mean, at least you know the top of the roof.
For sure. Be useful.
Would you be comfortable putting your sign to the top of the roof?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that it'd still be fine to go and do. It's, it's really a matter of the structure. I mean, to go, I have a feeling that if I did anything, I'd either have to go to that square section on the pole or I'd have to remain at the plate. I don't know if...
Let's forget where you have to go. I'm just talking about having your sign in line with the roof line. Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, visually, sure. That would be fine.
I mean, how you get the pole.
Yeah.
You know, that's fine, it's, yeah.
And would you be okay with that right now? You know, your, your opinion, if it were in line with the top, the top of the sign were in line?
I personally don't have a sign with how it's proposed, but I understand the rest of your concern.
Yes, definitely.
So it's...
Yeah, I would be fine with it.
What are you gonna do? Not what I need to say?
No, I, I would be fine with it, too. I, I, I don't have a, I don't have a significant difficulty with the height that it is now, especially if it's a slightly shorter and wider sign than the higher and taller sign. However, you know, in the interest of trying to find some conformity and trying to make it work from a business perspective as well as, you know...
Aesthetically.
Aesthetically, yeah, and, and meeting the, the law.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
Just find, trying to find that middle way to make it work. And, and really consider the business perspective. It's important.
Pat?
I'm very much, I would very much approve that. I think that that's the, the outcome that we really are looking for, frankly. To make it look less like a pole sign, more like a sign that everybody can see, serves your purpose and kind of gets out of this whole realm of ugly signs in New Halls for us for the next thirty years.
As I recall, a variance was granted for this sign some years back. Do you, do you remember that for this Super 8 sign? Anyone else remember that?
It sounds like I've heard that, but it's not because I remember it.
It might have been when I was really young. I still am young, but...
It was probably when I was very young.
But I remember it, I showed you what that... Well, here's the thing, you know, uh, and Joe, I need your advice on this, too. We don't have exact figures, exact measurements. Seems like the board could agree that if this sign, the top of the sign was no higher than the top of the roof line of the Super 8, that they would grant the variance that was necessary. But we may need the exact figures, and I want to make you aware of this. Our next meeting will be in January. At that time, at least one of our members will not be here. One of our members is finishing up tonight, and we don't have a replacement yet. That means that there would be at best three members present at the January meeting. You would have to have a unanimous vote on, to, to approve your variance.
Including anybody that's new, right?
Then we're not, if we get a new person, then it would not have to be unanimous. We'd just need the three. If there were, if there were three of us, there would be the three existing board members and then...
Right, you need three of five.
Yeah.
No matter how many...
So if we get somebody new, yeah.
I understand.
So can you address what we need to start out with?
Yeah. The condition.
All right.
I mean, you could grant it, I mean, you could grant it, and the condition would be that the top of this, topmost part of the sign not be any higher in elevation than the roof line than the top ridge line of the roof?
Without knowing, without knowing the exact ridge line, would be enough?
So that he could actually get started.
And that's what I would like, and I think...
I would love it, if I could just get started.
Because the sign now, when it's lit, is awful.
Yeah. I'm just worried about snow, because they gotta be able to get back there in order to install the sign. And if we had that one snowstorm, fortunately all the snow melted, but we can't...
Today, we had a gorgeous day.
To have a sign manufactured, installed, probably three weeks to a month, is my guess, permitting that the sign company is willing to go and work on it.
Would you be comfortable with a variance that, that limited it to the, the height of the, uh, the ridge line of the roof?
Yes and no. The, the only reason why I state no is I'd hate to have to replace the whole pole.
Oh, well, well, I'm talking about instead of the exact numbers, because I certainly would not vote. I'll let you know, I, as an individual, would not vote for variance that would be higher than that anyhow, so... So you know where I stand on it, so... But there are four other members that don't agree with me. I mean, some of them may not agree with me.
What I, what I would just say to that is I agree, but, um, if, I think this, the criteria are gonna be here unless the, the pole man comes up with something different, is taking off the telescope to get that done. So I don't know if he would run into a problem for an inch or so by the ridge line in doing that. So I'm saying, if he does run into that problem, where would we be at?
Where would we be?
Well, on a conditional.
He wouldn't have the variance.
Okay, so how soon would you know that? How soon could you know the ability of this pole?
Permitting I, permitting I can get ahold of the guy, I might be able to know by tomorrow if he's able to go and cut such a thing. I mean, like I said, I, I spoke to him before, and he had told me that if we were to cut the pole, it would impair the strength of the pole. Me personally, you weld the thing, it should still remain strong.
Right.
But I'm not a welder. Yeah, like, I'm not a welder, and I don't know the specs to that type of stuff. I would think that he would be able to go and do it, but, um...
I think that's what's, where we're stuck with that, is the integrity of the pole to be able to support the sign. So if we're doing a condition, then I think the new pole has to be part of it. If it doesn't...
Well, that's, I think it's gonna fall on you whether or not you want us to vote today. And the other question I have for you is, you know, we're talking about possibly approving this. Do you wanna see what that's gonna look like at that height from the different angles before we act?
It's, he's not gonna be able to show me much because of the trees in the way. So I mean, I guess, like, even if I took new photos, it's, it's still going to drop it down. I mean, it's, I'm going to have to cut the top of the trees regardless. I mean, just from those photos, and they're trimmed at that time, you can see that it goes to that first plate. Anything below that plate, I just have to trim it. I mean, that is what it is. It, me personally, I wouldn't, I don't even wanna cut the pole. I'm just trying to appease everybody. If, if I had a choice, I would just be like, "Hey, I don't know what you guys all think, but can we do it with what we have?" If that's not what you're looking for, I understand, and I'm open to going and reducing the size of the pole. It's as long as I can. If, if it becomes another mess where, let's pretend the pole is somewhere between three and five thousand dollars, that's disappointing to me, just because the pole's been there for thirty years. And I know that we didn't have anybody speak on our behalf, but we didn't have anybody opposing except for those that just like it here, so...
And, and at this point, since you mentioned that, I think I better ask the audience, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter having heard the issues that have been raised by the CBA and by the applicant?
I can see the availability right below you, right? We're falling out.
There's a new sign in the island that's very attractive.
Well, hindsight, I think it would have been helpful to have the pole man here.
Yeah.
To answer his question.
A little bit heavy.
Well, here's the other thing, Linda. I mean, it seems like we're all in agreement at, at the ridge line, so whatever three of us that were here in January would still be in that agreement without us taking a vote now, very possibly.
You any way?
Yeah, and you could do your, your footwork, I don't know...
Is there any way he could get his, his new sign up before January? I mean, we're really trying to help you out.
I think that's the question for the applicant to answer. Do you want us to try and act on this today? Or would you rather wait four more weeks to get more information to us?
Is there any way that I could find out people's feelings about leaving the pole as is?
That's not gonna happen.
Oh, well, I thought I made my very good...
Yeah, you did, but I didn't hear it from the...
I'm sorry. I'm speaking for myself as well. It's not gonna happen, okay? I won't be here until anyway.
I don't know, but I'm saying in reference to the, the pole, if, if you were to vote today, if we were to leave the pole the way that it is and put a new sign on it?
You'd be five and a half feet shorter than you are now.
Five and a half, yes, five and a half feet shorter than what I am.
Are you looking for a six-foot variance?
Yes.
Yeah, basically. Uh, according to Cornell's email, they're actually looking for a four-foot height variance from the road bed.
And once they remove the plate?
It would be fifteen and eleven and three-eighths, fifteen feet, eleven and three-eighths inches higher than the height of the Main Street road deck. And the, the max allowed is twelve, so it's a little less than four.
What, you're saying the height difference will be...
A little or a half feet?
It would be just, just a touch shy of four feet, actually.
Okay.
Shorter.
With the existing pole, taking it down to that first plate, taking off that eighteen inches off, and the new sign, according to this email that we got from the sign person, the top of the new sign and pole structure would then be fifteen foot, eleven and three-eighths inches higher than the height of Main Street.
So we would need a four-foot variance.
Right, what's allowed is twelve foot.
And change.
Fifteen, eleven, and three-eighths.
I mean, that's, that's, that's sixteen feet.
Okay.
That's sixteen feet.
Yeah.
So it's five and a half feet. Like, five and a half feet short.
Right.
That exists.
That's what it is now. And yet it is still a variance of four feet.
It's still a four-foot.
Higher than what's allowed.
All right, so let me ask you this. You wouldn't need a variance if it was four feet short?
Exactly.
For height, but for size, I would.
Yes, but that's not even helping at that yet.
But you may not... What we're asking you to do may be asking you to go more than four feet lower, is my thought.
Correct.
Where you may not, you may sit there and say, "I'm not looking for the height variance. I'm looking for a size variance on the sign."
I understand.
So, if you want...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Maintain your extra foot.
This is true.
And, and, you know, as people have said, we are really going to leave that up to you, whether you want us to vote on the height variance tonight, whether you want to... Whether you want us to vote on the height variance tonight, whether you want to go back to your sign person, get some more precise measurements, whether you want to see whether you want to lower it enough so that you don't need variance at all, or whether you want to bring it in line with some of our thinking. And the thinking of some of us, I should say. We can, we can, while you ponder that, if we don't have anything else to say about the height, we can consider the size variance, which is, I think, a completely separate issue. Or not.
If we consider the sign variance.
The, the size?
The size of the sign. And in the event that cutting the pole doesn't work, he could theoretically come back for a height variance.
Oh, yes.
He could.
Yes, and we theoretically could deny it.
Yes.
So at this point, for the, the four and a half foot or four and 11 inches, something like that, five feet? The five foot variance, is everybody in agreeance that they would not permit that type of sign? Is what I'm saying. Like, you're asking me if I would want you guys to take a vote on it. It's basically a five foot variance. With that five foot variance, is that too much for you to consider, or are you looking to go, or have me investigate to try to get to where I don't need a height variance?
That would be very nice. That would, that would make everyone's life easier. I am only concerned, it's my, and I've said this before, that it not exceed the height of the roof line.
Okay.
That was, that would be my concern. You can ask other people what they think and they may or may not wish to respond.
That's fine, yeah. I just figured I'd ask.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt.
That would be more than a five foot variance.
Would it be?
Wouldn't it be more than five feet?
It's four feet. It's a four foot variance.
I know.
It's a four foot. Maximum height is 12.
We don't know what the roof line height.
To get down to the roof line, right. It might be under the 12 feet that's allowed by the code. Might be less than what, than the maximum of the code.
In which case.
You wouldn't, it wouldn't.
Yes, suppose the ridge line is only 11 feet.
Well, then he can, he can, he doesn't need a variance.
He doesn't need, right.
That's what I'm saying. So I, if it's a four foot variance, would you guys consider the four foot variance? And if not, then I obviously have to go back and see if I can shrink the pole. If you oppose it, then obviously I'm gonna go back and see if I can shrink the pole regardless either way because.
Yeah.
You can shrink the pole, you can shrink the sign.
I'm doing that already again.
Still shrink the sign. You gave us the mentions, and you can still shrink it and still have it be.
Sure.
Right, and still have good handling?
Yeah.
For the elimination.
I'm not crazy about a four foot variance. I, you know, I, I do take conformity with how New Paul's looks. You know, you've got the mobile station across the street, which is, you know, a fairly subdued and tasteless structure. I'm not saying it is not, you know. And I know you have a really, you have a specific lot. You know, you've got a lot with some specific challenges. And a, and a location with regard to the road bed with some specific challenges. But you're also the only sign that looks like that and you're at the gateway. So I'm not crazy about it. You know, would I deny it? I'm not, I'm not 100% that I would deny it, but prefer not to have to.
I understand.
So I guess it comes back to you. Would you like, what would you like us to consider? Uh, hearing what you just said.
What do you think, Chris?
Do I number one or do I?
Well, I'm, I'm getting the feeling that it's not going to, um, we need the sign. That's the bottom line.
You're going to, I'm sorry?
No, we need the sign at this point, so, um, you know, I think we should just get started on trying to get it lowered and.
But they could still take a vote because if, if it, if they deny it, then I still have to go back and see if the guy can even cut the pole. If he can't cut the pole, then we're buying a new pole regardless of the situation. So if they don't vote, then it still remains open. We still have to wait another month for a sign regardless.
Well, if we vote and you deny it, then you have to start the process all over, correct?
Right. Even what if I didn't need the height? Oh, I still have the size variance that I have to deal with. So I suppose now I wouldn't.
Still have to start over with the pole.
So you may want, you may want to consider us acting on the variance for the size of the sign.
Yeah.
Take out the height variance.
Why?
If your sign person is able to make the height of the pole work, that's all well and good. If not, then you'll find yourself in some kind of financial duress or whatever reason you can come back for a height variance, correct?
Or I suppose there really are two variances being requested in the application.
Correct.
The board, I think, could act on one, the size of the sign. Reserve decision and continue the hearing on the height.
With recommendations?
Or, or just nothing. If it turns out that you're comfortable with the sign variance for the size and you can get the, the height down to the allowed level, you could withdraw the other portion of your variance application for the height.
Gotcha.
If facts.
And then I don't have to technically wait for that, but I have the size.
And you have the size and then you just do whatever you're gonna do to build a conforming sign. If you need the height variance, you would notify the board and you will have to hear it again in January about.
I love the attitude.
Good job.
So just kinda divide it with, you know, grant one, reserve decision on the other.
I love the attitude.
I, I also want you to know, I told you that, you know, January, as far as membership is concerned, is, is tenuous. February, right now, I know, as of now, we would not have a quorum and there would not be a leading February. Now, we're looking for, of course, a replacement for, for Yale, but we have not had people, you know, knocking the doors down with the board from the CBA. I don't know why.
I'm shocked.
What the name, sir? You're shocked. Anyhow, yeah, so.
So at this point, would we vote to close the public hearing on the size variance?
As to the size of the sign?
Size of the sign.
And leave it open with respect to the height, the overall height of the sign?
We haven't really discussed the difference in the size, so I'm not so sure if we want to close that port yet. What is the exact difference in dimensions? I have it that it's gonna be much smaller?
What's going from 8 to 8?
Yes, 108 to 80. One factor on both sides.
Yes.
28 feet, 28 square feet. Is that right?
Something is wrong there.
28 square feet or 28 feet?
It'd be 40 on each side.
40 on each side.
Instead of 52 on each side.
The allowed is 14 on each side.
Oh, it's 14 on each side. I thought it was 14 total.
So that would be 28 square feet allowed.
That's, that's, that was my, my question before. The seven square foot sign is not really the.
Yeah, I, I thought it was pretty small myself.
Yeah.
Kelly, do you know, is it 14 feet for both sides or 14 feet for one side? Can you?
Number four, whole signs up to 14 square feet, would imagine.
Oh.
Whole sign is up to 14 square, I think it's 14 on both sides total.
Total.
That's seven on each side.
Seven square feet, which is what? 40 by 2 and 1/2.
It's about the size of this plate.
Yeah, yeah, right.
My little boss.
Well, the, the thing that, that interests me is that the proposed sign is, pardon you, 28 square feet smaller than the existing super 8 sign. And the shape, the shape I find more desirable instead of, and the color too. Instead of being that awful super 8 yellow long thing, it's now going to be this horizontal.
14 square feet in area, I think they mean both sides.
14 square feet in area.
Okay, and you're asking for 28 feet?
No, I was asking for 80. 80, 80 square feet.
14 is allowed, you have 108.
14 is allowed and he's asking for 80.
Substantial.
That's substantial.
That's substantial, yeah. Well, how? I can't imagine that that sign is bigger than Chase Manhattan Bank sign or any of those, any of the signs along Main Street.
Maybe they only have one side.
No, they don't. They have two signs.
What's the size of this thing?
It should be six.
Two by 18.
Actually, look right here. Just about two and a half. How many tiles this way? One foot tiles.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, six by two and a half, so this is roughly 21, 21 square feet.
So this, this is pretty big. He's telling me the sign has to be 80 feet?
Well, it's five by eight on each side.
And we have two by?
Two and a half.
It's 40 on each side is what we were proposing.
Yeah.
So the sign's gonna be basically each, each side is gonna be twice this table.
Take this table and put it next to that one as big as that.
That'd be five by six.
That would make the five out.
Is that a, whom are we now? America's Best Value suggested sign size?
That's just the dimensions. Whatever those, the proportions for the graphic, I guess it becomes blurred at a certain level. I don't know what that level is. But another example, since you guys have probably driven past the hotel with the new sign on the wall, that I believe is a four by six, which is.
This thing here?
Yes.
That's a four by six?
Yes.
That's bigger than this table?
How big is the banner you have?
Which, I'm sorry?
How big is the banner you put up on the super 8 sign?
Uh, it's gotta be close to what the super 8 sign is, except minus the half moons. I don't know. I didn't ask. He just, what they did was they needed to make it square to go around the signs itself.
Well, that's, well, listen, the current sign is six feet wide by seven feet high, which is 42. So you take out the half moons, basically they're using that sign but turning it side by side.
Right, it's about that sign turned on its side.
Even though the application says it's 28 square feet smaller than the sign we currently have a super 8?
Which it is.
It is, it's so.
What Trixie uses is half moons because of shrinking it down to some degree.
If you took out those, the top and bottom of the half moons, it's basically that side, that sign turned on its side.
You're taking a foot each direction, I think, just about.
So you want it to be five by eight.
28 square feet.
Yeah.
Or one square foot, two linear feet.
The 28, four by six?
You want it to be four by seven. Goes from 4 to 28. Which saves you a foot.
14 square feet.
Oh, proposed, allowed. I'm not working with the grants yet.
Okay, how can that be scaled down?
Well, listen, you can go to a four by seven sign and go from 40 square feet to 28, assuming that that's the proper dimensions reduced.
That's what the wall sign is, four by seven.
Four by seven. My only challenge is we're taking, we're asking him to bring it in line with his roof, which during the day, probably gonna lose some line of sight blending in at the roof because you don't assume that's gonna be lit during the day.
You've also got a sign on the side of the building, so.
Understood.
Okay.
Understood that we're trying to get this both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we could ask him to reduce it whatever way we want. But knowing that it is a business, knowing that he is reducing what he currently has, I'm amazed that that sign is 108 square feet. So that sign right now is 54 square feet on each side. He's going from 54 square feet down to 40. And we're asking him to bring it in line with the roof line. I don't wanna cost the business. I think he's here trying to do the right thing for the community, but do the right thing for his business as well. I see a challenge in asking him to reduce it.
The size.
The height.
The size.
The size.
The overall size of the sign, if you reduce the width, you gotta reduce the height, so.
Right, but if you reduce the, what you're talking about, if you reduce the size of the sign, that the height would be more beneficial above the ridge line, the visibility for the business. I'm just saying it wouldn't be seen if we reduce the size of the sign.
If we reduces the size of the sign, it's still gonna be to the maximum height that's allowed via the variance.
Right.
It's not gonna reduce the overall.
Right, it'll be above the ridge line also, right?
So for me, I mean, reducing the size of the sign, I.
Finish that.
Trying to do the right thing for the business. In my opinion, it's fair.
To leave it the way it is, the way the application is, so you would approve the size variance request?
I would as well. I think it's proportionate to both the site and the size of your motel and the site distances that people are traveling to and from the thruway, the village. I, I just, I think, it seems to me that it's proportionately appropriate. That's my feeling.
Well, is this going to set a precedent for the next signage that we're going to be asked to approve or disapprove?
Well, I have one more thing that I wanted to say was, uh, that I agree too that it would be proportionate and that it would be fair. But I think also that, um, the amount of variance being asked for seems to be very significant. But if you play it against the loss of the footage that's in the existing sign, it seems to balance out that way as well.
And just addressing your comments, this is a unique property. If they were leveled with the road, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all. So this is a very unique piece of property, in my opinion. is a very unique piece of property, in my opinion.
And if it wasn't well-streamed by trees, I'm sorry, I think it would, you know, it would be a different conversation as well, I think that, that the trees that you have there are attractive and provide visual benefit to both your guests and to motorists, or people, not your guests, people on the outside.
And I think that every decision that we make sets a precedent.
Yeah.
You know, when you come out there...
Except that, that each case rises and falls on its own backs and surface states.
Yes, as, as Gabe says.
So given the topography, the highways, the changes in elevation, the rest of it, I mean, I think that this could be distinguished from the typical sign variance request.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of other factors here that wouldn't exist, I think, with other applications.
Yeah.
So I, I wouldn't worry that much about the precedence setting portion of it. I think it can be explained within each application.
One other factor that, that I, I would doubt, and this is probably very personal, is that graphically, the graphic design of the America's Best Value Inn is, to me, much more attractive than the Super 8 sign. Do we feel that we can vote on the size variance? We can close that public hearing, I'll ent, that part of the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion that we close?
I think we could, I don't think we're hearing anything from the public, I think we could close that.
Any comments on the signage? From the public? Neil?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing on the sign dimensions portion of the public hearing.
There a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
In which case, I will entertain a motion that we approve or deny the size, oh, comment first?
Well, we have the questions.
Oh, yeah, the questions.
Questions, do we, do we vote on keeping the public hearing open on the...
Yes.
Height variance.
Variants.
The height variance is still open.
Second.
Okay.
There's a second, take a vote.
In favor?
Aye.
Now, if you folks will look at your application sheet. Page three.
There we go.
Okay, page three, where it says for area variances, and we have the applicant, applicant should be prepared to address the following considerations at the time of the meeting, so I'll read them and you can respond. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance, and remember, we're just talking about size, nah-huh.
Yeah, just bear with me, I've prepped a thing for the pole height too, but I got it. To answer the first question, we believe that there will not be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor will it produce a detriment to any nearby properties by granting the variance for area in size. In fact, the change may be viewed as more desirable because we are reducing the area size, we'll also be, oh, sorry, we'll be reducing the area size of what we currently have.
And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance?
Due to a variety of hardships, obstructions, this isn't possible, such as sitting so low to Route 299, factoring in the concrete wall, sidewalk, the fence that's over the throughway passing, the trees that surround the sign, to provide staying privacy, noise reduction, invert better curb appeal.
Whether the requested area variance is substantial?
Our request is substantial when compared to the current sign law for the pole, or, for the pole sign, yeah, for the pole sign, because the law states you may only have twelve square, square feet in area, but due to our property size, and what's been existing for thirty years already, and the hardships, we feel that it's necessary to have such a size, that size sign.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
Again, we believe no, we've had a sign there for thirty years, and it's larger than, and it's currently larger than what we're proposing, if we hadn't changed our brand, we wouldn't even be before this EBA to begin with.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance?
We're here before the board simply because of the hardships, and the hardships were not self-created. The fact that the signage, that we changed our brand and need to change our signage, that is self-created.
Thank you for those honest answers, we don't always get them straightforwardly, is that? Anything else from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion that we either approve or deny the variance request for the size of the sign.
So moved.
Second?
Not, not, not to the motion to approve it or to deny it, but...
To approve.
Okay.
Okay.
To approve the sign not to exceed eighty square feet, right?
Okay.
Two sided?
Not to exceed...
No, no.
Eighty square, but I would like to add one condition.
Yes.
So long as the pole is painted to match the facade of the building.
No problem.
So there's a lot going on.
Indeed, very good point.
Wanted to blend in as much as possible.
Can I have that done in the sprint for you?
You have a year.
Yes.
You have a year.
By Thursday, July.
As soon as the weather gets warm.
So the motion then is to approve the request for the increase in the area of the sign to eighty square feet, with the condition that the pole be painted to match the facade of the building.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous then, so, you got your, your area.
Works.
You can order us now.
And if you should, you know, if you should decide that, that you could be in conformity with the town laws on the height, then go right ahead. Otherwise, please, find out exactly what the figures are, you know, height figures, the height of the roof, everything, so that when we do meet again, we can get this written paper.
Okay. Again, thank you to everyone for coming out in such nasty weather, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
We have to put an each statement down about...
There will be a continuation.
Continuation of the public hearing.
Yes.
Oh, I think you continue it.
For the height variance?
As to the...
I'm only asking if it might not need it if it gets...
Correct.
You know? Okay. So I make a motion, we continue to keep open.
Second.
The public hearing on the height variance.
On the height variance.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I thought we could all do it.
That's fine.
Now, I suppose, I suppose you think we're finished?
You got a second?
Oh, we are.
Thanks a lot.
I'll hold on to it. Yeah.
I have ordered. You did order? There's, excuse me, please. We're running a public meeting here, folks. I just entertained a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Do I need to handle my administrative issue, which is to formally...
No.
Okay, then I second that one.
Then you second the vote.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is down.
I didn't get a chance to give that to them.
Bye.